Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion Carry. And Madam President, as we can get back into regular session, I understand there's some clarification that you'd like with Resolution 24-399?
Yes.
I'll defer to the solicitor to explain that clarification needed.
Thank you.
So, yes, Council, with respect to Resolution 24-399, it says here that the city will be paying an amount of $3 million. That's in fact incorrect. Pursuant to our agreement with our insurance carrier, the city will in fact be paying no more than $500,000. The rest will be actually handled by the insurance carrier.
Thank you.
And Madam President, if it's your wish or the council's wish, would you like that item to be placed on roll call or for consent agenda, potential consent agenda?
Potential consent agenda.
Thank you. We'll note that. Good. And Madam President, that brings us to public comment at this time. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. Thank you very much. And Madam President, we have three individuals listed for public comment this evening. Public comment this evening, I imagine, will be five minutes for each individual.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the public, you may speak on any item that you wish to the council. Just please understand the council is not obligated to respond. First individual up for public comment is Mr. Carl Osborne. Hi. There it goes again. Hold on.
Jorge, can you assist with that? DA Richardson, there's something he has to do.
Is this good? Okay. My name is Charmaine and my husband Carl Osborne and I are here because we own two properties on Stuyvesant 811 and 809. We're new to Trenton, live in Mel Hill and have those two properties. Our reason for being here is twofold. So, we received, we continuously receive letters from the city asking us to do an assessment. So, we've gone in a number of times, done the assessments. The only reason I'm speaking now and not him is because I'm the one that brought the assessment in a couple of times. We were told nothing about taxes. And understandably, people aren't to pay taxes for their properties. We received a letter stating that we had zero taxes. So, it said 1,892. We have the proof here. And then it said a credit of 1,892. So, amount due was zero. So, we left it. We didn't do anything. Now, my husband has other properties in New York and the letters kept going there. So, we received two pink slip letters, one for 1,513, one for 1,932. So, I took that to the office across there, the assessment office, because we're novices thinking all we're doing is assessing the property because we're trying to renovate. We believe in the city. The city can be up and coming, whatever, right? We want to be a part of the solution. So, I took that letter to the assessment office, brought the paperwork that they gave, showed them those two letters, and was told to go down to the tax office because there might be a lien on the property. So, I'm like, okay. So, I did that, went there and was told that we needed to email someone and they let us know how much lien was on our property. I let my husband continue because he emailed and was told that our properties, both properties are foreclosed. How do you foreclose someone's property without like any sort of announcement to them, any sort of correspondence? And if the council or all the people who are involved needs to see any form of proof, we've got that with us. And my husband's going to finish our last five minutes or three minutes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carl Osborne. And about three years ago, I purchased two dilapidated properties on Stuyvesant Avenue. I don't know if you guys are aware of Stuyvesant Avenue, but my properties have been broken into three times. I've been fined by the City of Trenton twice. We have a road in the back of our property that I didn't know was a road until recently when the city showed up and took out all the garbages. The city has two properties next to my property that's been abandoned for the years that I've been there. I've renovated my properties to a particular standards. And ever since I have put those properties together, the city seemed like they'd taken interest in my properties. And now they want to take it from me. I've seen many people, my contractor told me that there were five black carhoos, one from the mayor's office, and several other investors there at my properties. No one wanted it when the windows were falling out. It was there for years, years and years on end. No one wanted it when the drug dealers took over the neighborhood. No one wanted it when I pulled up in front of there and there's about 200 people telling me that I can't come into those properties. No one wanted it. All of a sudden, since I have renovated it, and it's the best looking thing on Stuyvesant, the city takes notice. Or whoever the investors is, who wants my properties now, I will tell you today, you're not going to get it without a fight. Okay? I moved my family here from New York. And we planning on living over there. We purchased another property until our renovation is over. One minute walk from here, right down to 40 Living.
Thank you, sir. That is your time.
Thank you.
Greg Zeph.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Greg Zeph. I am the lawyer for Jawan Henderson. I'm also the Legal Redress Chair for the NAACP here in New Jersey. I want to thank each and every one of you for your consideration of Jawan Henderson here today. I am sorry to be in front of you with this terrible burden. He, Jawan, is in a wheelchair now, not in the best shape. Otherwise, he would have been here himself. But I wanted to tell you that whatever you're going to do with this matter, he needs your help at this point. And I would like, on behalf of Jawan Henderson and the NAACP, to volunteer my help to you. The City of Trenton Police Department, as you know, has undergone a number of major complaints and there is currently a federal investigation going on. I have been working with law enforcement throughout New Jersey and in Philadelphia for over 30 years. The NAACP here in New Jersey has literally hundreds of law enforcement officers and retired law enforcement officers who are part of the organization. We want to help you in Trenton to make your police department a better place so that something like this never happens again. I have been in touch with your city attorney, Wes Bridges, and we are going to open a dialogue with the city and hope to be part of whatever the solutions are to make your police department a safer and better place going forward. And I would invite you to reach out to him or to me or to the NAACP because we think not only that you need the help, we think we can help you. So, thank you.
Austin Edwards.
Very soon. Good evening, council members. I'm going to keep it brief. I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleague Greg Zeph from the state NAACP Legal Redress. We support the actions of the state NAACP in this matter and just appreciate the time and consideration that you guys took in resolving this. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President, that is the extent. That is the extent of public comment. All the individuals I have listed for public comment. If it's your wish now, you may start with any member of council for civic comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
I just thought to be brief tonight, given we had an extensive executive session. Tomorrow night, we have the North Ward Citizens Advisory Council at Galilee Baptist Church at 5:30. 4:40, Martin Luther King Boulevard, invited everyone to attend. If you know of anyone in the North Ward who should attend, please let them know. We have a great discussion. We are trying to help with our citizen police relations and also solve some crime issues. It's been very successful. And we've been quite fortunate to have our community relations officer, Detective Corey McNair, and other members of the team, as well as Director Steve Wilson with us for most of our meetings. And I can assure you, our members who come to our meetings regularly are very happy to have those discussions and be able to get answers to their questions and gain a lot of information. Finally, tomorrow night at the meeting, we will be giving away some of the anti-theft devices that the police departments graciously have been offering. So, if you need one for your vehicle, please come to our meeting and we'd love to help you with one. Finally, I just want to congratulate some of our Trenton High sports teams, particularly have been getting some good ink in the newspaper. The football team is doing a good bit better than in past seasons. So, congratulations, including beating Hamilton High West last weekend, as well as the soccer teams are performing quite well. So, all our kids and all our sports and the arts deserve our congratulations. But I just wanted to highlight a few of our teams that are really doing a great job this year so early in the season. So, God bless everybody. Thank you for coming to our meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just want to say thank you for being present. Thank you to those who came and spoke up in support of the case that is being brought before us and also to the Osborne family for sharing that information with us as well. I believe the director went over to speak to you. So, hopefully, we can get some solutions for you all soon. Just a few announcements. Thank you to our recreation department and all of the work that's going into the parks. And especially, I can be there, obviously, because I'm working during the daytime, but the park that's in Villa Park for our special differently abled population, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that. I would love to see more of our parks cater to that population. So, thank you so much for that. Just a few announcements. We have the Crito de Independencia. That's the event that is happening at Trenton Ninth Grade Academy. That is September 21st, happening from 12 to 3 p.m. And that is hosted by the Puerto Rican Day Community and Friends Organization. Also, that same day is the Party is Sober event hosted by the Empowerment House. That would be at Unity Park from 12 to 5 p.m. And then also, we have our Taste of Trenton going around. So, please come out and support that, support our local businesses and restaurants throughout the city. And then I also want to announce something that I've worked on since December, which was renaming our athletic complex after Sharon Grady, who is our first African-American woman to become an athletic director, also someone who won seven state championships here in and supported the city of Trenton. And we will be renaming that in her honor on October 12th. So, we are able to come out to Trenton Central High School. That will be October 12th. And the time will be announced later on once we solidify that. Also, I just wanted to express that I wasn't here last week because I was one of the new members to join a cohort with the Hunts Institute. And it was really, really informative. And I just want everyone to know that, you know, although we're away, some of us are not here all the time, but we try to join and be present as possible. It was a great conference on connecting elected officials with our education as we often see that our elected officials are disconnected from our Board of Educations in different states. So, it was very, very informative, a lot of knowledge. And I'm looking forward to sharing the information as the time goes on with that initiative. I believe that is it for today. And Happy Hispanic Heritage Month to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Council President. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for all coming out. I did want to address the Osbornes. We've been communicating quite a bit and I am glad to meet you face to face, Ms. Charmaine and your husband. And I'm hoping that we'll get to a positive resolve with that. I am, the other two already left when it comes to Jawan Henderson. So, I'll just leave that where it is and we will deal with that come next meeting. I do want to remind everyone that this Thursday is going to be a day when we will be voting on whether or not City Hall Annex will be renamed after former Mayor Douglas H. Palmer. And we invite you all to come back out on that day. I think it'll be a historic moment and we would like to have as much folks, the community support as possible. I also want to echo with Taste of Trenton. If you don't want to take advantage of it, it costs only $10. Support our community, support our elders. You can give it to an elder. You can give it to someone who is less fortunate. And they can go around the city and actually taste a variety of foods around here. So, it costs you very minimal. If you can't afford it, we ask that you to please. If you don't get one for you, get one for someone else. So, if you get one for you, get one for someone else anyway. Support our community. And I do want to say congratulations. Villa Park came out absolutely beautiful. We saw the pictures and it blessed me to see that they did take into consideration. It was not an afterthought to put those who are differently able in mind. As a mother of a child who is differently abled, I, it blessed, I just thought to say, it just blessed me to see that they were in the forefront with this. So, I'm very grateful to see that. My next West Ward Community Conversations will be held on Tuesday, October 8th. We've been having great conversations, great dialogues with the community. And we invite you to come out. If you're in the West Ward, you want to know what's going on, you have in the West Ward and you want to air what's going on, give me updates, what's going on in your community, in your section of town. I would love to hear from you. And that's at 5:30. We always have it at the, on Hermitage and Artiston, the police station that sits there on the corner. On October 15th, we are reminding you, it is the last day to vote. We cannot tell you who to vote for, but we want you to vote. If you are not registered, if you know of someone who is not registered and they are of age to register, we beseech you, please have them register. They can go to nj.gov and they can register right there online. Or if you need forms, we keep, I keep forms with me. You can register. You can register. Please register. Please, ma'am. Please, sir. And then on, actually, that is my last one. So, I don't have, I was going to talk about Ms. Grady. I'm going to read a portion of our city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank each and every one of you for coming out. I especially thank our directors for the job that they do in terminal. Thank you and thank you to everyone that's been out. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening and those that are joining us online. Thank you for spending some time with us as we handle the city's business. I just want to say congratulations to the NAACP for hosting their voter registration event this past weekend at Hedge Path Williams Intermediate School, not middle school anymore. And I wish that I could be there, but my schedule had me elsewhere. I would have definitely been out there on the front lines with you all. But congratulations, these efforts are much needed. Thank you to the city for revitalizing Villa Park Playground area and definitely echoing the sentiments of my colleagues for including playground equipment for the differently able children in the neighborhood. That is where I grew up at and that was a long time coming. And I'm glad that my children get to enjoy a new playground, as bittersweet as it is. And that brings me to an idea. As, you know, someone that grew up in that area for 20 years, we need a basketball court over there. We have a huge tennis court that has, for the 20 years I've lived over there, has been locked up in a cage and the neighborhood does not actively enjoy it. It's only for like summer camps that come there. We don't have access. Since I was a teenager, we had to hop defensive. We wanted to play in there and drag our basketball courts to the middle of the street and dodge cars as we played basketball. So, I would love to see at least half of that court be turned into a basketball court the way that we turned some of the baseball area in Unity Square Park to a soccer field to cater to the new demographic in that area. Tennis does not really serve a purpose in Villa Park anymore. And basketball would be more beneficial to the community. So, I just want to put that out there while we're looking at revitalizing the rest of our parks. And my last comments, as this is National Voter Registration Day, as Councilwoman Frisbee said, the last day to register the vote is October 15th. And that sounds redundant, but remember that date as you are out there telling everyone that this election is coming up in November. It's also important to tell them we have early voting days starting October 26th to November 3rd at the Trenton Fire Headquarters on Perry Street. And I believe polls are from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m. on each of those days. And if you're also interested in being a poll worker, you can work for $300 for the full day or I think it's half that for a half day, your choice. But it's $300. If you have the day off, what can you lose? So, let's get out there to vote. This is by far one of the most important elections. And I know we get tired of hearing that, but it's the truth. So, let's get out there to vote and thank you for being with us. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we get to Council Vice President, Councilwoman Gonzalez had something she wanted to just say real quick. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry because I forgot to say this, but I want to say thank you to both our, all of our directors. But shout out to Director Douglas for coordinating the 9/11 memorial with me and my colleagues. And then also Director Wilson, because I see we got a crossing guard in front of my school finally. So, I had to say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. I echo many of my colleagues' sentiments tonight. First of all, Happy Hispanic Heritage Month to everybody. Second of all, I am very proud of the city in the way it's dealt with our parks. They came to us with a proposal to rehab many of our parks, 26. And they have been fulfilling their promises and have been getting these parks underway. And ribbon cuttings have been happening. These parks have been revamped and rehabilitated. And this is exactly what our community needs. Our parents have asked for it. Our children have asked for it. And we have much of it now, more to come. So, I'm very, very excited for that. And I just want to applaud the City of Trenton for that effort and for making it happen. It does make a lot of difference. And I get a lot of phone calls and a lot of text messages and emails about it. And there is a ribbon cutting for Orange Street Park this Thursday at noon. If you'd like to come out, that would be great. We'd love more people to come out and just celebrate the successes. Other than that, September 24th, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the CYO on South Broad Street, located at 920 South Broad Street. I'm inviting the South Ward and anybody else who wants to come out, along with all the directors who have been invited and members of their departments to talk to the community about crime statistics in the South Ward, drugs affecting our streets and alleyways, trash management, street paving, traffic calming measures, lead service lines, rehabilitation of parks and fire safety. So, please, if you, these are your questions and you'd like answers direct from our department heads, please come out and join us in this discussion. Let your voices be heard. This would be a great evening. And there'll be other resources there as well. Voter registration, reentry program information, anger program information and the like. So, please come out to the CYO from 6 to 8 on September 24th. With that being said, have a wonderful evening, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and for joining us tonight. I'll be brief with my comments. My colleagues have addressed the Osbornes and everything. And I see that Director Liston has been talking with you. So, we're hopeful that some resolve will come to that. I would like to say today is National Voter Registration Day. And I would like to shout out my Trenton Central High School colleagues and our students. We had a wonderful assembly today that was put on. We had guest speakers there today that came out and really spoke to the reasoning why it is important for our students to engage in the voting process and why it is that they do need to work to vote. I'm sorry, and work, but vote. And also, I want to thank Mr. Garcia and his phenomenal staff, Jorge and Shalise, for coming out. They were registering students to vote in the cafeteria after the assembly was done. Typically, I do voter registration events four times a year at the school. So, our kids are constantly aware of their civic duty and their rights and we do encourage them to vote. I do want to say that tomorrow, there is going to be a ribbon cutting at Unity Square Park at 1:30 p.m. Council Vice President, I'd like to correct you on your announcement of Orange Street Park. That is actually Friday at 12 noon. So, tomorrow is Unity Square Park at 1:30. Friday is 12 p.m. at Orange Street Park. I would like to commend interim Director Paul Harris and our interim BA Maria Richardson, as well as the mayor and everyone involved in the tremendous work that's happening with the parks and everything. It did touch me when I went out the other day to Villa Park to see all the sensory items and locations and the things for the children, showing the progressive movement and the inclusion. And the one thing that Director Harris always says is he looks to focus on increasing the quality of life for our residents. And that is very, very important. And he is very consistent with his message in saying that. And it is evident in his works that that is what he truly is setting out to do. So, thank you for carrying the mission of our former recreation director, now our interim BA Maria Richardson, forward. I would like to say to Dr. Diego, thank you for the great work you're doing with the CDBG. We were out there the other day as well with the demolition of the 17 homes that are going to be happening on Fountain Avenue as part of the Choice Program. So, we're excited for that, right? They're going to tear it down and we're going to build it up and start, you know, making our city better, right? And so, to that end, I do want to say, yes, we have our critics and some people will say to all the good things that they see happening, what about this? What about that? Listen, before, we wouldn't have it, nothing. And we move it. So, we're going to take it like we get it. And the thing is, I want to shout out my council for doing a great job in putting Trenton and the residents first. I thank you for that. I thank you all for the collaboration, for the conversation. I thank you for, as we go back and forth sometimes about stuff, to try to get to what it is that will be the best decision for our residents. And I can say that within our time of working together, we have collectively done just that. And so, I want to thank each and every one of you for your hard work, dedication and service that you've given to the council and to the community. I want to thank our directors for the tremendous work that you all do. It is not easy to come to work and, you know, take on the burdens of the day sometimes or dealing with staff or just dealing with life in general, right? Nobody, it's not easy for any of us, but y'all do it and you do it with grace. And so, I thank you for that. I thank you for your time, your efforts, for your travels, your come and go for those that come from a distance and then the heart that you have for the city. I would just ask that you continue to operate in fairness, to operate, you know, holding people accountable, holding yourselves accountable as well and just doing right by your employees, do right by yourselves, do right by the city and then do right by each other. So, shout out to Mayor Gussiora for the work that he's doing. He has a council that's working with him and a wonderful administration that's pushing the message forward. There are no excuses. We are here and we are helping to move Trenton in the right direction. And I'm looking forward to us to continue to do so as we work to continue in that effort together. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Madam President, moving on with the docket at this time. You have communications petitions and reports, which will go on Thursday. Going through ordinances, Madam President, if you would, would you like me to read each ordinance in its entirety or are there any questions regarding? Or are there any questions regarding the ordinances at this time? They will be read Thursday for second reading.
Thank you. Are there any questions by council for any of the ordinances presented tonight for second reading?
If I'm hearing none, Madam President, I'll move on with the docket.
Okay.
Moving on with the docket, Madam President.
One second.
Okay.
I just, regarding, you said for second reading, not the first reading?
Second reading.
I just want to make sure I heard that. Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you.
Got it. Moving on with the docket to resolutions, Madam President. Are there any items that you or any of the council wish to extract from potential consent agenda?
Counsel, does anyone have any that you would like to question? What I would ask first is, is that please look at the Department of Housing and Economic Development first. Are there any from those that we have questions on? Okay, very good. As we move through, are there any other resolutions that have been presented throughout the docket that anyone has questions on? If so, please state so now.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I don't want anything removed, but I just wanted to know if Director Simple could just explain so for, for clarity, for public and for me, actually, on some of the, on really 405 and, what was it, 405, I think? Not 405. What, the loan we're purchasing, electric service repairs, like the repairs and stuff, just if you can just explain what's up here.
Okay, one second.
No, I didn't.
Director Simple? Not right now. What we're doing now is we're going to list the numbers and mark them, and then we'll call them when we're ready. But thank you for being ready to answer. Councilwoman, any of those?
No, it's 404, I think, is the main one.
The electrical repairs?
Yeah.
Okay. So 404 and 405?
Not 405.
Okay.
Just 404. Hopefully, you'll explain all of them.
Okay. Any other council people with questions?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
I believe 24-399 should be roll call, as it says settlement? Or is that staying on a consent?
We were putting this one on consent for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? And again, I just want to say to the public that may be listening or watching that when we have our docket review and we go through, the council does read through everything, and we go back and forth with our questions to the administration and things that we can have answered prior to us meeting, before a meeting, we have answered. But everything is documented and noted as such. So don't be alarmed if there are not questions or if there's not a lot of questions. It's just that the questions have already been satisfied prior to us coming here before you tonight. That being said, Mr. Simple, Director Simple, if you could come forward regarding Resolution 24-404.
I believe that's the.
And 405, it's the same, it's the same thing.
Oh, gotcha.
So if you could just come forward and just explain those to the Councilwoman.
Good evening, Council President.
Good evening.
Vice President, council members.
Thank you.
Director Simple, Trenton Water and Sewer. Yeah. So the water utility has been built many, many years ago, was 1914. And we've had, done minimal upgrades to the electrical system. We run multiple tubes, 700, 700 horsepower pumps that requires a lot of maintenance over the years. We had a study done in 2023, and the study, the results from this study requires us to do some serious upgrades from when we have blackouts. We call them brownouts, means that once we lose power, most times, the plant shuts down. And you know what it is not to have water in our system? It's a crime. So this, this study and this contract will give us the ability to do the upgrades over the next couple of years. Electrical upgrades, yes.
Thank you. We'll leave that on consent. Thank you, Director Simple. Mr. Garcia, am I calling for my motion to put our resolutions into consent?
I'm sorry?
I said, am I going ahead and calling for my motion and listing my resolutions that are going to go into consent?
Ah, yes, if there's no items that are extracted from consent agenda, you can go ahead and name them off, or if you'd like me to.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Here we go. May I have a motion to approve the following for consent agenda? Resolutions 24, 390, 391, 394, 395, 396, 397, 398, 399, 400, 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, and 406.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carry, consent agenda has been created for Thursday. Vote. Moving on to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Madam President, is there any question for the lone ordinance 24-063? Madam President, just a housekeeping item. I have been informed of a change in title to this particular ordinance, and I'll read that off if that's okay with you.
Yes, thank you.
Ordinance amended, ordinance 24-063. Ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic one-way streets as it applies to, and the correction is from Horton Avenue and Sherman Avenue to Gerard Avenue and Horton Avenue. And I've been informed of this by Director Honnery Terry, who is here present as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions by council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to note that we have a couple of members of East Trenton Collaborative in the House with us, from that neighborhood. And this ordinance, when it is hopefully heard and passed for the second reading, will be of immense help, because both of these streets run across, around the side, rather,